Room?
Yes.
Great. Great. The meeting will come to order, council agenda, Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, regular Township Council meeting of March 15th, 2016. We're starting at approximately 7:35 PM.
Introduction posting of notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by following the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board, the municipal billing of December 17th, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 22nd, 2015, and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 24th, 2015, and was forwarded by FAXO, local newspapers, and local radio stations on December 17th, 2015. Note, council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision, access Public Access Channel 21, 11 o'clock AM on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.parsippany.net.
Okay, flag salute. Mr. Paluso?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for the day and justice.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Present.
Mr. Paluso?
Present.
Mr. Valori?
Here.
Other present, others present are Mayor James Barbario, Business Administrator Ellen Sandman, Township Attorney John Inglesino, the CFO Ann Cucci, and Khalid Madden, the Acting Township Clerk. Mr. President, we have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings will be April 5th, 2016, at 7:30 PM. That will be our agenda meeting. The next meeting will be, after that, will be April 19th, 2016, at 7:30 PM. That will be our regular meeting. Approval of minutes, regular agenda minutes, March 1st, 2016. I'd like to put a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
Second. Motion was made by, by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. We have presentations going on tonight. Mayor?
Yes. I'll start with the Deputy Chief.
Do you want to start that? Because I see you have presentations for tonight. It works to Senator Panaceo on here?
No. They didn't make it. I'm sorry. They couldn't make it. It was postponed for another time.
Okay. Okay, great. All right, so we'll start with the presentations dealing with the Deputy Chief. Thank you again, Chief, for showing up tonight.
Yeah, good evening.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Does it work?
It should work.
Can you hear me in the back, Lee? No. Give me that.
I don't think I have a presentation. No, no presentation now. I think I'm just answering some questions that you might have had follow-up from last week.
Okay.
Or March 1st.
Okay.
Chief Pantina, maybe your mic works better, but one of the things that, there were some questions that were actually in writing from a council, Councilman Rob Paluso, and I know we went over them with the chief and the mayor, and I thought a lot of the questions, some which were answered, but maybe need to be answered in more detail, and I know you have the, you have that as a...
I do have...
Yes, thank you.
...the questions that you were looking to answer.
Great. If you can go over them, I appreciate it.
Well, do you want to ask the questions, or do you just want me to give you the...
Yeah, I can answer the questions. One of them is, you indicated that the police department will be hiring a juvenile counselor due to the SRO agreement. My question was, how much does a juvenile counselor be paid yearly, including benefits?
Okay, I think the number that we discussed was $60,000. I'm not sure about the benefits. That's not my line.
What I would like to say is, in the budget, there was already $40,000 already allotted for that, so it's an additional $20,000. That individual who we're hiring does work for us. She's full-time somewhere else at this particular time, but she does work for us during the summer. She's excellent and has an excellent reputation, and because she would be full-time, there would be some benefits involved.
And she was also employed by us in the same position, and I think the price was 54, and that was in 2012.
In fact, where she is now, she's receiving $66,000, but she wants to come home to Parsippany, and that's why she's going to come for the $60,000.
Hey, Ellen, can you just hold up for one second?
Yeah.
Khalid, can you just check to see if the mic is actually working? Because I don't hear any...
The mics aren't working.
Test, test, test.
If you could do that, because we're...
Make it louder?
Can everybody in the audience hear her, her speaking?
No.
No, okay. Let's try that again.
Can you hear on, no, this...
There you go.
Now, okay.
Testing one, two.
What I was saying was, in the budget, over the years, we had, there was an allotment of $40,000. This woman who will be coming, has excellent, you know, has excellent, has an excellent reputation, as well as the fact that, right now, she's presently working in another community at $66,000, but, as I said, she wants to come home to Parsippany, where she works during, part-time during the summer here for us, had worked for us before, and we're talking at $60,000. As far as the answer to the question, benefits, yes. As a full-time person, there would be some benefits involved.
And I just want to follow up on that. That was a position that we always had within the agency and...
And that goes to another question, that third question. We already have a policy on it from 2012 on the youth counselor, juvenile counselor. We're expanding it because they're going to have more responsibility.
Is there paying the role then?
No, expanding just what's in our policy.
Okay.
It's going to cover more of the summertime action.
Okay.
The stuff that's in the policy right now is for the school year.
And is the Board of Education paying half that person's salary as well?
No.
No. So there is a job description for this already from 2012?
Yeah, I have it if you want a copy of the original one.
Yeah, I'd like to see it when you have a chance, you know, give it to the clerk. I appreciate it.
Okay.
You also indicated that if Lieutenant Dowd or another lieutenant would act as director, they'd be available 24 hours a day, and that overtime be kept to a minimum. How much overtime? What's the hourly rate that a lieutenant makes, basically?
Roughly $124 an hour.
And if the lieutenant's called out for, say, 30 minutes, I know part of the contract is that they're paid for flat four hours. Is that pertinent to this as well?
No. Excuse me. No, it will not be.
So they'd be compensated at a rate of about $124 an hour, then?
Right.
They're not guaranteed the four-hour overtime?
No. We worked something out that's going to work to both benefit.
And will the Board of Education be paying half that overtime with us and sharing that expense?
No.
The two new SROs that you were discussing a couple weeks ago, that will be placed in schools, what's their exact salary, including benefits, as the new SROs?
Again, benefits, I don't know what the total package is for benefits, but their salary is $102,000.
And that's dependent on who you put in there in that position?
Well, the two, the two people that we have in mind, their salaries are $102,000.
And they're basically senior officers?
Top pay.
Okay.
Okay, so they're top pay, basically. And the Board of Education, you said they were splitting it, but if they're splitting it, how come they're only paying $50,000, then? They're not paying $51,000?
Well, the numbers, when I say split, were rough estimates.
Okay.
They weren't exact numbers, because everybody in our department makes different amount of money, so...
Okay.
We went with roughly what an average was when we were negotiating it.
Okay. If, if the lieutenants move to act as the Director of School Security, will a new lieutenant be promoted to replace the lieutenant?
Yes.
And just to follow up on that, in our table of organization, there's how many lieutenant's positions available that are not filled?
Right, we have currently, we have seven. I think this would make eight. I think this would make eight.
And what's our max number? We could go up to...
I think nine is, nine is the max.
So we're not above our number?
No. We'll never, we can't go over the ordinance, so we're working within that number.
Okay. And is the Board of Education paying half of the new lieutenant's salary?
No.
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 So if the lieutenant...
Just say what it is.
Just, well, he's paying, they're paying for the $60,000 that's coming from the salary of the director.
Okay. So if the new lieutenant is promoted, then you're going to have to look at sergeants moving up. Is a sergeant going to be moved up and promoted as well?
Yes.
Okay. And will they be sharing that expense with us?
No.
They will not?
Just to let you know, they'll be on patrol. They have nothing to do with the school.
Yeah, they're not, they're not part of, of the, of the contract at school.
Yeah, they're still in the patrol section.
Okay. The other question I had was, is, as far as you were indicating, they investigate harassment, intimidation, and bullying. My question was, what's the legal ramifications if they invoke their Fifth Amendment rights, that police officers cannot investigate those three matters?
Okay, the way it works, and I spoke to the SROs that we have there now, when I say we investigate it, we investigate it initially to determine whether it is a crime that we need to partake in. The actual HIB issues, we do not investigate. So once we find out that it's not a criminal act, then we contact either the principal or the SAC and the student assistant counselor.
Yes.
And we let them know, and then from that point on, we're not involved in the investigation unless they request it.
Okay. And you further indicated that the officers are not dedicated to the schools. They can be dispatched to another school as needed.
Well, the, the two extra officers that we're putting in there now...
Right.
The two that are at the high school are strictly at the high school. They do not leave the high school during the course of the day.
Okay, so they're stationary? They don't leave the school?
They're stationary. They don't leave the school property unless, in the past, unless there was a problem at Central or Brook Lawn or one of the lower schools, then they would leave the high school and go find out what was going on there. Now, these extra two people are going to be stationed, quasi-stationed at the middle schools, but they will be floating around to the other schools. So they'll separate the 12 schools into two, take six each, and then in the course of a day or in the week, they'll be bouncing around, but nobody will know when they're going to be at what school.
Now, we discussed the last meeting about Class III officers. If we have a Class III officer, if it's approved through legislation through the Senate, can we replace the police officers with the Class III SRO?
Sure. I mean, you could replace an officer with, with anything. I don't think it's a good idea, but it can be done. I mean, with the permission of the mayor and the council.
Okay. And the officers that are there, are they going to be dealing strictly with the security of the facilities, or are they going to be working with community element as well?
Well, they're going to be working with parents, teachers...
So are they doing community outreach at the same time?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. I mean, they're going to have a busy day ahead of them. It's not going to be, you know, an easy task, but they can do it.
Okay.
Rob, I mean, Councilman Paluso, I just want to, can you hear, can you hear me back there? No.
No, just something off the system.
Okay, you know what? Can you... How about now? Better? Better?
Yeah.
Okay. One of the things is on for the agenda is the, that we're seeking support, the council is going to pass something this evening to make sure that the, that element does happen with regard to those folks. So that, we're pleased to have that on. That was done rather quickly at the request of the council last meeting, so that is on the agenda. I didn't know if you were aware of that.
No, I was not.
You had mentioned at the last meeting also that the officers will be floating from school to school. How often will they be floating? Because I know Councilman Valori also mentioned that they can be on the road, they can do police work. How dedicated are they to the schools?
No, they're, we're not going to tell you where they're going to be, but they're not going to be doing police work like stopping cars and, you know, arresting people outside of the school.
Okay, so what is our current figures right now as to how many robberies we've had and how many incidences we had that we need patrolmen right now? Because we're not up to 113 that we're supposed to be at max.
Well, I don't have those, I don't have those numbers. I could get them to you, but I don't have, I don't know exactly what you're looking for.
Because we're taking officers off the road, and, you know, our intent was putting the additional officers on when we voted for it in the last budget process was to ensure that the safety of our residents was taken care of as well.
Right.
So, you know, the number of incidences that we've had in robberies and break-ins and, you know, mischief and stuff like that, I just want to make sure that the, the road is taken care of as well as the schools.
Well, no, the, the road will be handled. I mean, we have, we have the officers, the amount of officers that we need for the road, and it's, that's to the mayor getting us and the, and the council for getting us the officers that we need. I mean, we just hired, I think, seven.
We're up to 101. Just, just let me just clarify something, so you understand the table of organization or the Police Department. First of all, whatever you understood or misunderstood last week, I never said that these officers are going to be patrolling. They're dedicated to schools.
Right.
And obviously, if something did happen that was, you know, of, you know, a nature where any officer that's available to respond to, you know, an act of violence or a bank rob, whatever, obviously, they're going to respond to that call no matter where they're at. But my point of the matter is, our juvenile bureau has been lacking in manpower for years. So us being proactive with putting these officers there, they're going to be assigned to the schools when the schools are open, and when they're off-season, they're going to be assigned working in the juvenile bureau still. So these individuals are part of the juvenile bureau, so there's no one being pulled out from a spot, and, you know, another part of the agency is going to be lacking. And you're right, eventually, when times are good, we'll be up to 113 officers, but needless to say, that division or that section of the vision is going to get manpower that's needed, like the individual that's going to be the counselor. That spot has been vacant for years. So we're building up, you know, our internal, you know, sections, and they'll be, you know, providing a great service to the school district.
Yeah, because if they're on the road, then they're not building those relationships as the, as Lenahan has, that you had mentioned, that, you know, he was known as Father Lenahan because he related to children.
Right.
Because he's there consistently, you know, 24/7.
Right.
So he's developing those relationships. So if they're being pulled for other duties or on the road, or even split between other schools, then they're not going to forge those relationships as deeply as the high school SROs are right now. What are the costs for the SRO certifications as well?
The schools are free, I think. The school, the original school that we send them to is, is offered by the, yeah, Morris County. And their training, the training of these officers does not stop because they become SROs. I mean, you know, you have a highly trained Police Department in Parsippany, and we continue that. You know, it's not going to stop because they're in the schools.
And through the negotiations, was any study completed regarding the number of incidences in the schools? Because my, my largest concern was that we have 10 elementary schools that are now protected right now. Have we done any studies to see the number of incidences at elementaries and Central?
No, we have not done a study that, you know, pertains to those.
We don't really have a proper placement of where, where we're going to need the officers at this point.
Well, and that's what the director's going to handle when he gets in there. That's going to be part of his job responsibility, and that changes. That could change.
Absolutely.
I mean, so when he's looking into it, it's not going to be one set number. Like, I have numbers of different violent crimes throughout the state or throughout the country, and it shows a decline in, since SROs have been in the schools, a decline, a decline in violent crimes and simple assaults. But that doesn't mean anything. That's a piece of paper. We're going to be, we're going to be dealing with it every day, you know, and checking to see where we have a problem and what we can do to change it. So it's going to be fluid. It's going to be constantly moving.
Yeah, and, you know, the reason why I had these questions is because, you know, since the last meeting, it was the first time that this, the SRO program was brought to our attention as council. I was not aware of it. I've had no dialogue with school board members, and I wish it would have been more transparent, that we would have had this dialogue prior to coming up to the council meeting. And that council meeting last week was an agenda meeting. It's really a workout session where we're trying to answer questions that we may have. One of the concerns that I had was that some of the matters were discussed, I understand, with, with the mayor and several council people, but it was never discussed with council as a whole. So it was new to me, an eye-opener, that this was being presented. And obviously, we have a lot of questions, and I've asked for these questions to be answered for me by last Friday, hoping to come to this meeting and not have you here, that we would have had the questions. Well, if we would have had ancillary questions or backup questions, we could have done so. But, you know, without us being properly prepared, you know, for this matter, it becomes difficult to make a good decision. So I appreciate you coming back and answering the questions, but... But like I said last week, you know, that the largest concern was the fact that, you know, every child is treated equally, and every child is equally important in our community, and they all have to be covered. And if we can find a plan to cut expenses, that we could hire additional retired officers, it would be more prudent for the taxpayers, but also for all the families and the children that are in the elementary schools that are not covered. So I hope you understand my deep concerns for that. And in regards to any officers and their promotions, since we do have a lot of openings right now, I don't see it stifling anybody's promotions. I see there, there could still be movement if the, the Police Department wasn't involved, and we did go with retired officers or Class III, you know, if that was approved.
Right. Those are, those are all valid points, but we have another partner in this, and that's the Board of Ed and the Superintendent of the Schools.
Which, which... One moment, Mayor. I just want to finish my conversation. The, the, the point is that I did give them ample time at the last meeting. I asked for them to come up and, and address us as a council. You know, one thing that, you know, the taxpayers have to understand is that on my tax bill, 63% plus goes to the school board for taxes. You know, we have a 22% tax, taxes going back to the municipality itself. So, you know, I would have liked to see the school board spend more money to protect the elementary schools. And I did ask them to come up, and, and through these negotiations with the mayor, they've had ample time to approach us as councilmen to go over these programs and to talk about shared services, in which I've been asking for shared service for a long time with the school system. And don't get me wrong, you know, I was one of the proponents back in September of 2014 that actually was an advocate of having SROs in the schools. It's just that nothing was done since 2014. Now, all of a sudden, there's an urgency, and we're not looking at the bottom line of covering all schools that's most beneficial to the taxpayer. So, you know, in, in those regards, also, I spoke to Senator Buco's office today, who's a sponsor of the bill for the Class III, and they indicated that the bill is moving along, which is nice, but, you know, those positions, basically, will save the taxpayers a lot of money, and a lot of schools will be covered throughout our communities. So it was nice to hear that Senator Buco actually was raising the awareness of this bill for the Class III. So that's all I have for now. Mayor, you want to speak?
Yeah.
Follow up on this. Yeah, Mayor, you can go, and then I'll go next.
All right. Very simple. When, Councilman, you say that you didn't know anything about this. I know residents have come up to the council meeting prior to, I know residents have come up to the meeting prior about the SROs, and you know why? You knew I was negotiating an agreement with the, with the school board, number one.
No, we did not.
Number two, number two, transparency. You mentioned transparency. And the reason why I had the questions answered at the council meeting, because I felt it would be fair that all the council members, if they had any questions, that they could ask questions as well and go off the back of your questions. And I don't even know if the council president received this.
But this is all news to me. That's why I have a lot of questions. I didn't see these questions.
So this was the best way to be transparent out in the public. But let me just reiterate what the, what the Deputy Chief said. The whole idea was the fact in the past was very difficult to do such things, because we lost state aid prior, so we had to readjust the way we govern. We had to readjust our budgets over the course of time. This is something that I've been wanting to do since 2010, 2011, '12. We've had several meetings with the school boards, and hopefully one day we come to some sort of an agreement. Just so you know, the Township of Persippany, Troy Hills, does engage in a lot of shared services. This is, this will be like our fourth or fifth one in shared service agreements. And this is why this one is a home run for several reasons. They're not just going to be in there, you know, they're going to be working with the faculty. They're going to be working with the children. And you have the Director of Security who's going to be working And you have the director of security, who's going to be working with the superintendent of schools. I spoke to the superintendent today, and his exact words were, "We're not professionals in law enforcement. You guys have to do it. You should do it." And I agreed with him. We're not experts when it comes to school academics, so the schools handle the academic part of things. We handle the security and the policing and the community policing as well. That being said, I also had a further dialogue with him today, and he said that I can't wait for the Class IIIs, because that's your cost savings. The Class III police officers are a cost savings. And they fall under the auspices of the... If I said the word wrong, excuse me. I don't say "strategic," at least. They fall under the realm of the Township of Persipony and its police department. That's where the... And there'll be retired police officers, and it'll be a cost saving, a significant cost savings for us to put on another 10 police officers. Now, I don't know, would we be prudent to the taxpayers at the salaries that we have now? Probably not. It would be $400,000, $500,000 if you hired 10 police officers. That's why this bill is very urgent. I hope it gets passed. I know it was passed in the Senate. Now we have to get it passed in the Assembly. And the township will move on it. We will move on it, and we will try to secure every school that we can. But it's not just securing them that, hey, we're the police officers in town. These kids are going to have relationships. These teachers are going to have relationships with these police officers. And that's what we wanted to do. Council President, I'm going to let you go off of that, because I know you wanted to speak, but...
Yes.
That being said, I want to thank you, Deputy Chief, for all your hard work. We've been working on this for a long time, since 2011. I know we've discussed it. So, thank you. Thank you for your dedication.
I appreciate it.
And thank you for, you know, helping us push it forward.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on quite a few things. In regard to the questions, I probably could have helped you out in answering some of those questions prior to you getting here tonight and obviously having dialogue with the chief.
Well, the administration worked out the agreement. They need to address it.
What I'm saying to you is, you had questions. You could have addressed them to me, knowing that I'm a retired police officer from the Persipony Police Department. But that said, we live and learn, we move on. Those questions, I could have addressed them. That would have been not an issue.
It's not your responsibility to address them.
But my point is, my point is this, Councilman, is that you had the school superintendent that showed up here requesting assistance. And if you were so concerned about having 14 resource officers or Class III officers, you have every right, as a citizen and as a councilman, to go to those Board of Ed meetings and have dialogue with those Board of Ed members. And some of those Board of Ed members are here all the time. So if you were that concerned about it, you could have met with those Board of Ed members and had dialogue with them on this, because this has been out there floating as an SRO for the last year. But the reality is this: You had the school superintendent showing up here requesting to put police officers in those schools, the middle schools, and having a director. We've been having two police officers as SROs since 2002 for 14 years, so it's been working. We are saving $170,000 that will go back to our budget because they're picking up half their salaries. Right now, those three officers, if they didn't go into schools, we, as a town, would be paying for their full salaries. Now, we're gaining a plus on that because the school is picking that other part of the salary up. And now, again, we're really getting more dialogue with doing more shared services within the community. So to me, for us to sit here and say, yeah, we would like to get all 14 schools covered, but like going back to the mayor, that is something that is still going to have to be worked out in our budget and then with the school, because they still fall under the police department. So in the meantime, if we sit here on our hands and do nothing about it, we will have no presence in those schools. You heard Dr. Seitz saying they do not want to arm their security officers in the school. There's liabilities involved. They, these officers, will be police officers in the school district. We face that liability as a police department, like we always do. And then when we have Class III officers, they fall under the police department. That's the relationship that this superintendent and all those Board of Ed members want. So as far as I know, those Board of Ed members are going to vote unanimously on that to obviously pass this shared service. So this is a win-win for the town. So us going back and forth over how many years were these schools were not covered, we're being proactive. We're working with the school superintendent. So needless to say, I think it will be, we, the town, will be a role model for the rest of the state, because we are being proactive on it. There's nothing political about this. You have the school superintendent, who was here with his members, and requesting our assistance. So remember, there's morals, there's values, there's ethics here. This is the right thing to do. And when it comes down to it, the number one, the number one priority we have is protecting our kids in the schools, protecting our kids in this town. So that is a responsibility that we have. So if we do go up to 113 officers, we could do a lot more in this community, but we eventually have to work at trying to obviously get those other officers hired. So again, at the end of the day, this is a win-win for the town and the school district. And Chief, I appreciate you showing up, and I didn't realize you were going to be answering questions tonight.
I just have a couple of questions. I guess I'll ask this to the mayor. If the... Once the Class III, because it's going to pass, that legislation, that we're going to look to hire these Class III specials to put them into the elementary schools, because that's my biggest problem with this, is I don't want to leave any school not protected, the elementary schools. I mean, whether you have a 12-year-old boy or girl, or you have a five-year-old boy or girl, I think they both deserve the same protection.
Absolutely.
Are we going to ask the Board of Ed to pay for half of those salaries for those additional?
I haven't really had that discussed, and the answer is yes.
The answer is yes?
Yes.
So, okay, we're moving in the positive direction there.
I don't know if... I mean, I guess maybe there's questions for the deputy chief. With our table of organization right now?
Yes.
I don't know how many lieutenants we have or sergeants we have, but wouldn't we be able to just promote a sergeant to supervise these SROs and have that sergeant supervise these guys? It would save us some money.
Instead of a lieutenant?
Yes.
Could I be honest with you? I thought it should have been a captain. So, you know, you're dealing with people outside the chain of command. We wanted somebody more well-rounded for the position. The compromise was the lieutenant.
Chief, can I just follow up right now? Do we have a juvenile lieutenant?
No.
Okay. So how long has that position been vacant for?
Quite a while now.
That's why, you know, trying to have dialogue here, if other members truly knew our table of organization with the manpower that's been missing...
You basically don't have a juvenile division now in the police department.
You don't have a juvenile division, that's what I'm trying to explain earlier.
And that's what we're trying to get back to, a working juvenile division, which we do not have.
Councilman, Criffy makes a good point. We wanted to put in every school, Councilman. And once we heard about this Class III, that's when the negotiations started to take a turn for the better with the schools, because then they recognized, you know what? Could they afford to do every school? Could we afford to do every school? With that Class III, and you're right, it's going to be passed, that was the catalyst for the agreement, the handshake, because now they know, once that's passed, we're going to work together, we're going to share the salary, and we're going to be able to...
And let me follow up just one more thing. Just to think about, we're saving $170,000, right?
Roughly, yes.
So if we're splitting that cost with them, that $170,000 could be going back towards several, probably about 10 Class III officers.
Don't be mistaken, though. Whether the Board of Ed wanted this or not, this was something that we discussed in the past. We wanted it, because we think the mayor and the chief thought that this was the right move.
Yes.
And it is the right move. So if you're getting mon... The chief was out sick.
He was out sick?
Yeah. He's been out all week. So if we wanted it for free, I mean, it's just common sense that we take the money for it.
And for how long? I know when I got here, and the mayor asked me to come meet the new superintendent and come with the chief, and I asked, well, what is the school paying us now? And it was nothing for the last 11, 12 years.
Yeah, for... Yeah, since 2002, nothing, absolutely.
So when I had that meeting with the finance folks, I mean, Paul was there, and Lou, and the mayor, and we said, you know, we're going to say, the fairness here is, I know we're talking about children and safety and all that goes with it, but it also has to come down to resources. And if you're really going to have a shared resource, that's when they said, all right, we'll pay $50,000 for each police officer. And what we worked out, because of keeping even overtime down, we worked out that they were not going to get paid overtime. Took a little while, but we got it done, that they were working five days a week so that they could be in the school five days a week and not be concerned with an overtime cost. So lots could happen.
Which is in their contract, too.
Yes.
Which is in their contract.
I know, you know, this obviously is not my call, but I know you said you'd rather have it... You guys originally wanted it to be, go to a captain.
Right.
Being that, you know, I would like to see all of the schools covered. I mean, I was just going to throw this out there, but I know, I mean, the plan's already in place or whatever, but if another sergeant were to be made, and that sergeant was also dedicated to those four SROs, and now he's an extra person that is... That's his area, okay? And then that sergeant reported to a captain, that would technically enhance, because we're going to make the promotion anyway, right? We're making a lieutenant, we're going to make another lieutenant, and a sergeant.
Well, we weren't going to make the lieutenant unless we have the director's position.
Absolutely.
Right, right, that's what I...
Yeah, but we don't...
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, you're going to make the director's position. So you're going to make another lieutenant, you're going to make another sergeant. If we were to just make another sergeant and have that person detail to that SRO unit, and then they reported to the captain, technically we'd be saving money, but we'd also be increasing the presence in the school, because that sergeant would be part of that area.
Well, the lieutenant's going to be part of that area.
Yeah, the lieutenant, but...
But he's going to be spread.
Well, yeah, but the lieutenant, the lieutenant is going to be doing so much more than just supervising those officers. I mean, there's a lot involved in this. This is a full-time plus job.
That's great. What I'm saying is, that sergeant could be doing that and also reporting to the captain, right? I'm just trying to look, I'm trying to look up a way to get more presence into all the schools and also still saving money. If we just promote another sergeant...
Yeah, but...
We're able to increase the presence in the schools and still save some money.
Still, it's the same amount of money.
No, because we're promoting...
Yeah, because it roughly is the same amount of money, because you're promoting one person that we don't have, and then you're just replacing him. Those other spots are there.
The other ones are being replaced.
The other spots are still there.
You're going to have an extra lieutenant, huh?
Yeah, you're going to have one extra lieutenant.
You're filling in...
Right, so we would have an extra lieutenant.
But we're not, but we're not putting a sergeant underneath him. The sergeant's staying in patrol or in the detective patrol, wherever that position, wherever he came from.
Lieutenant makes more than a sergeant, though, so it is a little bit. But I'm just saying, I know the plan's in place, right? I'm just saying is that that extra sergeant could be part of that unit, could be, his presence could be more in the schools.
Yeah, but...
The lieutenant's going to be spread out with all his duties, the juvenile section, doing all the schools where that sergeant could be more dedicated to...
Oh, so you're saying you want to make another sergeant?
No, I'm saying, instead of making another lieutenant...
Yeah, but the duties are not changing, so...
Yeah, but we have to... We're so low in lieutenants right now that they're in the specific spots that we need them. If he gets moved to another position, we need to fill in the fourth guy on the patrol division. So we're not making that extra spot someplace and then just leaving the other spot open. We have four lieutenants in patrol. One lieutenant's coming out of patrol and going into this position. We need to fill the other lieutenant's position. That's why we're doing it.
I think also one should know that we've been very proactive, the department has been proactive, that right now we have the two and the other two SROs, but I know we have more than that trained.
Yeah, we have about six, I think, six or seven.
Do you know what the... What's the... Well, we don't pay any of that money, but what's the Board of Ed's plan to do with the two retired police officers in the middle schools that they're paying $50,000 a year to?
That's under the school.
No, I know, that's under them, but are they going to move them now to...
I mean, are they going to leave them there with our SROs?
I didn't hear...
The only thing I could make an assumption on is, once the Class III comes in, they might become Class III.
They might become Class IIIs, yeah.
Right.
But to answer your question, the question is, they never entertained that they would not have them still there, they would still be there.
Yeah, but that's under the school's budget, and...
Actually, they did say that at the meeting, last meeting.
But remember, they're not armed, they could put them in the schools.
I know they're not under our budget, it has nothing really to do with us, but I mean, now, you know, that's more money they could have given us for two more guys to put in two elementary schools.
Yeah, but that's...
Again, I only...
We're trying to get more police, or more armed people in every school.
Yeah, but can I just follow up one thing here? You're right on your point, and we all want to put that there, but what was introduced to us was a shared service, where they're paying half of our salaries, so we're doing...
I'd like them to share more.
Okay, well, then you need to go with Mr. Paluso to the Board of Ed meetings and speak to him about this.
That's why we have a liaison from the council.
So we are, please don't talk over me, please, we are obviously having dialogue with the school superintendent. He runs 7,500 students and 2,500 employees. He's here basically begging with us to try to get our officers, us, to pass this, to put three officers in the schools. So doing this is better than nothing. So saying that you want every school obviously covered is great, but if you're that concerned, go to the Board of Ed, right? You have a child that's going to be going to school soon, and say, please hire other civilians in there for right now, if that's a big concern. But right now, we have a, this, you know, working, reading document in place right now, that we're trying to provide a service that is needed for the school, and it's going to keep continuing, getting better and better, once this legislation's passed. So you're right, we all want that, but we need to do something now that's sit on our hands.
You're done?
No, are you done? Because your questions are...
Now, it's my turn, right?
Yes, yeah, fine. And I would have loved to see those questions prior to getting here.
Well, we would have had the answer to the questions from the administration. It would have been all the councils I asked.
Well, it should go, the protocols should go through the council president to put on the agenda.
Okay, this is not on the agenda.
We're discussing it here tonight.
Okay.
Okay, so the protocol is, the protocol is to go through the council president, the protocol is to go through the council president, and you should have went through your council president for that.
And I...
All right, so ask the question.
...to get answered.
Ask the question.
Thank you. The point of the matter is that the superintendent, if appointed a contract, says he determines where they're stationed and the specific duties of the contract, and the SRO officers and the SSO officer report to him, ultimately reports to the police chief. But if the superintendent didn't want to get involved with directing anybody, as he indicated, then why is the direction going towards them to begin with? That's my comment. And the second of all is that if we went with retired officers, it would be considerable savings. As Councilman Valori indicates, we're saving $170,000, but we're not taking into account the questions that we had about benefits and the promotions, and it's costing us a lot more than that. $270,000 was discussed last time, $260,000 I see in the resolution, but we're probably looking at closer to $350,000 to $400,000. If we hired SRO officers that are retired police officers, that retired from our own police, personnel police force, we have two of them right now, they're more than capable of handling the schools and covering the 10 schools that are not covered right now. And again, regardless of what is said, the rhetoric, this is not about politics. This is about 10 schools not being protected, every child is going to be treated equally, and every child protected equally. And in reference to the Class III officers, once we agree to a contract with police officers that are managing this program, they cannot be replaced with a Class III. We're going to have an overlap then. I spoke to Senator Buco's office today about the Class III. It's specific verbiage that says they cannot replace existing SRO officers and not replace the police officers. We can hire more Class IIIs, but then we're going to have the expenses for what we have right now, if we agree to this, and we're going to have the expense for the Class III as well. So there won't be any cost savings.
I think, I think what you need to... I think, could I just say one thing?
We pay the health benefits already.
Yes, but I think what you need to understand is that when they make these bills out concerning police officers, they have in mind other unions that are involved also. So when other towns might say, okay, we're going to go with the Class IIIs and get rid of a police officer, they literally mean they're going to get rid of a police officer. We're not talking about that.
No.
And this contract, this contract is good for, I think, a year. I'm not exactly sure. After a year...
Two years.
Or two years, I'm sorry. After the two years, you know, that discussion can be made. If that law passes or that bill passes, I mean, it sounds like a great idea, but until somebody enacts it, there's really nothing we can discuss about it. We can't, I'm assuming that the council can't afford another 10 police officers. I think it would be great to have one in every school.
But Chief, just...
But we don't spend the money. I mean, we don't have the money. We spend it, but we don't have it.
60% of our taxes goes to the school board. They have to find a way. There's 10 schools that are not covered.
And they have, because it was zero before. Now it's 270, 100 for the two that are there, and then 160 for what we're talking about.
Ellen, just let me follow up one thing, just so folks that were not police officers at one time, or never in law enforcement. The chief of police runs the day-to-day operation of the police department. We have no say in. So those two resource officers that have been in the school since 2012, we have no say on that. He interacts with the mayor. So if, in fact, the mayor spoke to the chief of police right now and wanted to put seven, eight police officers in those schools right now, we're going to be paying for their full salaries to be in there, and we could do nothing about it, because right now, we have two police officers in those schools for the last 14 years, and we were paying their full salaries. So Dr. Seitz, knowing that all the schools don't have security, right, they're asking us for help, so they're paying for half of our salaries. So really, we're making history on here, where we're making the Board of Ed pay the town back, the police department, and we could use that $170,000 in savings for something else. But I just want you to realize, the chief of police, if he wants to put 20 of his patrolmen just doing selective enforcement and writing tickets all day in town, he could do that. We have no control on that. So those two that are in the schools right now, we had no control on where he wanted to place them. We are 13 officers short. The juvenile bureau, we do not have an active juvenile bureau. So this is going to be a win-win for us, because we're going to make a lieutenant there, we're going to have four officers that are going to be in the schools, there are going to be active juvenile officers when they're not in the schools. So to say that we don't want all the schools covered, we do want them all covered, but at the end of the day, if the chief wanted to put those officers, as many as he wanted in the school, he could do it, and we have nothing to say about it. That's how it works here, unless we have a supermajority and we pass an ordinance, and then we say, okay, this is what we're going to do with this table of organization. But that's not happening. So the reality is, what they've been doing for the last 12 years, 14 years, we had no control on. And right now, we're gaining back $170,000, which we can use towards Class III, and as the mayor indicated, when this bill is passed, Dr. Seitz, obviously in his board, wants to pick up half that salary. So right now, we have $170,000 plus that we could use towards those Class III. So it's a wash.
The, real quick, the thing that you were referring to, the news that you got from Senator Buco's office in reference to Class IIIs replacing police officers, you can't... It's correct, you can't replace a full-time police officer with a special, a Class III special. You can hire more specials, or if your manpower goes down, you have retirements, but a Class II or III special can only work X amount of hours.
That's correct.
Per week. So, because what police departments were trying to do, or some towns were trying to do, instead of hiring, replacing a full-time police officer, we're hiring specials to pay so they could pay less. And you can't do that, so that's what he was referring to.
And that's correct, Paul.
Yes.
That's what, in answer to what Rob is concerned about, because there are no, you know, there's not those additional officers, they're not replacing the third, they wouldn't be replacing anybody, they would be in addition to. So that would be...
Right. I mean, the police chief, if this Class III program goes through, he'd be, if he wanted to, he could pull the two out of the middle schools and replace them with Class III specials, and have them in all the schools.
Sure, you're right.
Okay.
So we all have differing opinions. Like I said, my opinion is still firm. We have 10 schools right now that are not being protected. Every child needs to be treated equally and equally protected. That's what I conclude.
And I suggest you go over to the Board of Ed and plead with Dr. Seitz on getting those other security in there in the meantime, because we have no say on that.
I think collectively, the entire council should.
Excuse me, in regard to the Board of Ed, I am the liaison to the Board of Ed, Mr. Paluso, and the next following meetings will be on Thursday, March 22, at the office of the Board of Education, and then on Thursday, April 7, at Knollwood School. So those are two meetings that possibly you could go to and present your questions.
And Councilman Grignani, no disrespect to you, but you're new to the council this year.
Yes, yes.
These meetings, apparently from discussions, the last council meeting took place last year, when you weren't here. So the liaison from the council, from the Board of Education, did not properly notify did not properly notify us. No offense to you. I'm sure I'm quite confident, because you've already told me about a couple of things that we've been discussing in the Finance Committee. So I'm sure you'll do a good job with it.
Know what she's indicating is that if you have a concern about this, the Board of Ed's having those meetings.
Those are the next meetings.
Thank you.
Good.
Any other questions? Ellen?
No, no.
Mayor? Anyone else? Okay.
Captain, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Business administrator? Do you have any questions or concerns here in this, here in the...
No, I think, I think as, I think as the, as the topics come up, I think I will be addressing them in that fashion, unless there's something in particular.
Okay, great.
Because it's better that way.
Okay.
Hopefully make the meeting move quicker.
Great. John?
One item for closed session, and also, I have a few items that I'll be addressing on the agenda as they come up.
Great. CFO?
Same thing. I have one thing I'd just like to talk about when we go into closed session, maybe, and then, as it comes up.
Okay, great. Clerk?
The only one thing I just have is for the, if you go on www.parcipony.net, we have the public documents and municipal ordinances button. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there it goes.
Okay, that button for the public doc, you can't still hear me?
Now, if you can hear it, but it's muffled.
Okay, so.
The public documents.
Yes.
The public documents and municipal ordinances, there's a link on the website of Parcipony. We're updating that now. We have the agendas, ordinances, minutes, and resolutions. Pretty up to date. It's still a work in progress, but if there is any information with regards to past resolutions or ordinances, you can locate them there. That's all.
All right, great. Any committee reports from any of the council members? Mr. DePero, anything to report?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Paluso?
Not at this time.
None at this time.
Okay, great. All right, bids to be taken, February 26, 2016, sealed proposals for one-site, four-by-four emergency medical vehicle for the EMS squad. And also to be taken on March 16, 2016, sealed proposals for the newer sewer televising equipment to be supplied, installed, in a township sewer utility trailer. Quotations, proposals, and qualifications, none. I'm going to go to the public hearing section. I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Criffey, second by Mrs. Grignani. Roll call.
Mr. Criffey?
Yes.
Mr. DePero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes. Anyone from the public would like to come forward? You have five minutes. Please come up here and sign in and state your name.
Yeah.
Sir, if this is regarding anything that's on the agenda with regards to a pipeline or anything that, they're going to have its own hearing, so you could speak on that separately.
Great. Okay, that was quick. Anybody from the back there? Okay.
Could you guys sign in?
I'll do it at the end.
Okay, and state your name.
Katie Cassidy, 7 Stephen Terrace in Parcipony. Can you hear me in the back?
Yeah, much better, yeah.
Awesome. Okay, great. A couple of things. First of all, I think we need new microphones.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that should be put in the budget. We need to do something with that. Second, I want to just do a nice public thank you to Mr. Joe Pleschka. I sent him 15 emails about the website. He got back to me very quickly on each and every single item that I had talked with him about. For the most part, what I was asking about was the committee meetings, the minutes, as well as the list of members. And so there has been a lot of movement, but Joe Pleschka can only do as much as he's given. He puts things on the website, but he can only put what he has. So for example, turnaround time on the planning board and the zoning board committee list, or the board member list, turnaround time was extremely fast on that. However, there are a lot of committees whose member lists are not up to date. There's obviously a problem with minutes across the board. I understand that that's going to be a very time-consuming issue. I have offered to the council here, as well as to the zoning board, and I'll offer to any other committee, to come in and help with that project, because I understand that it's big and I have the time to help out with that. It needs to be done. The public needs to have that transparency. Another big issue, really, really big issue for me, is that the municipal government transparency committee is not even listed under the list of municipal committees that you have there. And now, I personally am confident that CFO Ann Cucci and business administrator Alan Salmon are doing a great job with our finances, and I don't need to see that. But there are a lot of people in town who disagree, and they have the right to, first of all, attend these meetings, which I understand are for financial situations, and they also have the right to understand who's on those committees. There are a vast number of committees that I don't know where they're meeting or when they're meeting, and I would love to go and attend these, and they should be open to the public. We have an issue, too, with the open public meetings. Some of these, I'm not finished.
Back up a little bit from the mics, because over again, heck over here.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well, so, because here's the deal. So these meetings should be open to the public, so that the public can go. But because they're not promoted, and they're not on the calendar, the public doesn't know when these meetings are, so they can't go to these meetings. And I have been trying for a very long time to get this information. And so let me put it to you this way, okay? You guys are the elected officials. It is your job to make sure that the government is transparent, to make sure that the website is up to date. It is not up to a 23-year-old resident to come in here and to come to every single meeting possible that she can go to and to say, this needs to be done. I am sick and tired of being the only person who is very concerned about the transparency of Parcipony. And I will be blatantly honest with you, this is disgraceful. There are committees that are six years behind in minutes, six years, okay? I haven't even been out of college for six years. This is a problem, okay? And not only is it a problem, but it's a problem that you need to solve. The administration, the council, the mayor's office, you appoint these committees. It is your job to make sure that the committees are doing their job, that their information is accessible to the public, okay? And another thing, the directory is not up to date. It has not been up to date since 2011, okay? So nobody knows what committees are open, what spaces are open on committees. I've talked to five people within the last week and a half who have applied for various committees and have heard no response. I've had people apply over a year ago and have heard nothing. And I know for a fact that there are vacancies in a number of committees, because I'm on one with a number of vacancies. And it is not fair.
Thirty seconds.
Our government is not functioning, and I thought it was a congressional issue, but apparently it's an issue here, too, okay? You guys don't even know what's going on. You don't know what's going on with Board of Ed. You're not talking to each other. You're not communicating effectively, and that's a problem. If you guys can't do your jobs, then you shouldn't be running for another one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, were you referring to the minutes with regard to the Finance Committee? Because I did provide them for the council.
I was talking mostly zoning, planning, council, open space, any of the committees listed on the bottom. I know that the finances are totally up to date. I mean, you're so on top of that, it's ridiculous. So this is not at you. This is in general.
No, we don't take it that way. We just want to make sure that, I know, I did give them, I gave them both to the two liaisons, to Loretta and to Rob, and then, when I didn't hear back that anything needed to change, we had the order to look at it, we looked at it, the mayor looked at it, and then we'd sent it out to the whole council. Because Rob had asked, you know, he said, look, and when he was not on the committee, and it wasn't just bullets, we went into depth and gave a lot of information. It was a couple of pages of minutes, because we covered a lot of material. So I mean, again, I take pride in this, so I just wanted to, I just, because I heard you say finance, and I just wanted to make sure we were, you know.
Oh, and I know Khaled's working his ass off, too.
Yeah, just, just to follow up on what you're saying.
Thank you.
We don't take anything that you say for granted, but you've got to remember, we have been in, we haven't had a clerk, he just filled in here. We had a lot of issues that we're falling behind on. We have a new BA and a CFO, and you're right, it is important. But like anything else, we're part-time, okay? And we're always, and I will say for all the council members here, we're involved in this community a lot, because you've seen us out here. And I admire you being detailed, worrying about that, but you have to give us a little bit of chance. We are trying, and, you know, you're getting responses back where, again, you texted me one time about the site not being up.
Absolutely.
And I reached out to Joe Pleschka.
And it was done in 24 hours.
Yeah, I know. But he's involved in other multitasks, so my point of the matter is, you have every right to vent, and you hear us venting up here, but don't ever think that we take you for granted, because we do follow up on that. And it does get frustrating. So, again, if we were full-time, you know, the poor mayor would be really behind in his office there. But, you know, we are trying to work, and I will tell you, I constantly have dialogue with the CFO and the BA all the time in this position now. And, you know, we're trying to really iron out the things that we've been lacking on. But needless to say, overall, I think the town's doing a good job.
And if you need help, ask for it, and I'm here.
I'm just going to put the guilt on the mayor right now. I was going to say, Mayor, I know that you hire, you know, those part-time individuals, so you have somebody who has the skill set, so I think maybe we might take her resume.
I'll say this. You came to my office and we discussed this, and I told you we're going to do something about it. And you come up here today as if we're not trying to do something about it.
Because it's more than just you, Mr. Mayor.
When I have a meeting with you, I give you my word.
Yeah.
But you come out here like we're not doing nothing about it. We discussed it last week, all right? It's not going to happen in a week, that much I will tell you. We have a transparency tab on our, on our site.
But it's not the committee.
It will be updated, but we have a budget. That's a draft budget. It doesn't go up yet, until the budget is...
Yeah, it's a working document.
So it's a working document.
The real issue is the meeting dates.
Excuse me. We discussed this, and I told you, we have a plan. We're going to do something. So, and I admire your compassion, you know that. But I told you, we're going to do something. And I know how Joe's working. I know it's going to take a lot more hands. And, you know, I'll tell council president Valori, maybe we should have that meeting on the Transparency Committee, because, you know, everything's working out well, we have great dialogue, we have great dialogue with the council president, and then we can go forward. And we're going, we'll put our expenses on it. I'm surprised that's not even on there, because usually that goes on there on a monthly basis. But I did, I did have conversation with you, and we're going to do something. So I'm kind of taken aback today, because when I discussed this with you only a week ago, no, that was a Thursday, last Thursday, you didn't give me an opportunity. You just come up here and, you know, our government stinks, this and that. And our government doesn't stink. Our government works hard for the people of Parcipony, the true hills. Everybody in the township works very hard. And they, a lot of people in the town have a lot of heart. A lot of people that work in this town have a lot of heart for this town. And as well as myself, as well as the council members, we might always agree, but I believe everyone that's up here has the best interest of the town. So that being said, we're working on it. So, and I do admire your compassion, so.
I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you tonight?
I'm delighted that Katie is here. We need more people like Katie, that remember...
You can state your name in...
Okay, okay, I'll sign in.
But you can sign in afterward. Just state your name and where you live.
My name is Dorit Theallarine. I live on 293 Fox Hill Road in, well, Parcipony, with Denville mail address.
Yes.
And first of all, I'd like to say, if it wasn't for youth, we'd have no change. People get a little older, and they lack that ambition. So I think Katie did a very nice job of saying how she would like the town to be. Granted, maybe not in five days. But she makes some excellent points, because I live on Fox Hill Road. I came here a month ago because I found out there's a proposal, totally unknown to me, to move the road into my front yard. And I did ask, what's going on with that? I don't have an answer yet, and I'm a little upset about that.
Well...
I don't have an answer. I've heard a number of reasons from various and assorted people on what's going on. And I know the gentleman over here told me, and he said today, he's putting things on the website, which is great, because there is something called right-of-way. And hopefully, that's one of the things you put out there, because I didn't call you, you didn't call me, we didn't have an arrangement to do that. Is one of those things out there, the right-of-way?
Well, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you specifically. I could tell you the entire ordinance book, but the right-of-way is more of a legal terminology with regards to an easement. Whether or not that is, that's specifically there, it may be, we would have to check. I could tell you that all the ordinances are there. I'd have to conduct a search before I could answer that question.
Right. I mean, the right-of-way is in writing. I mean, I have a little play on words, but I know an ordinance needs to be written.
Correct.
And I know you're working on it, but that's one that I'm interested in seeing, because it's been quoted.
Have you actually seen something to that nature, or, because we had spoken last time, and you indicated to me that you saw something, or someone had showed you something?
Somebody showed me a map, and it said right-of-way, 50 feet. My neighbor told me about three or four years ago, there was something from the mayor's office that said 10 feet either side, so that's different than 50. That would make it 20. And I'm just curious.
I think the easiest way to do it, I spoke to the engineer, township engineer on the project.
Right.
And it's basically more for safety purposes of the reconfiguration of that. I think the easiest thing to do is have you, myself, and him, and you meet in my office, and I'll bring the plans with them.
Well, you know, Mayor, a lot of people on my road don't know what's going on either. Maybe we should, you know what I'm saying, is...
Well, one of the reasons, I know he said this was a draft, the plans are a draft. These might not even be the plans. This might be the process that we might go through. But I think with him in the room, and myself and you, you can get a clearer, a clearer with the processes and what's going, what's going to go on. And, and I think that would be advantageous, you know, if you would like to do that.
I would love to do that. I'd also love to have known it was going on before it started, because I don't know, what point are we at? Is this something that's going to happen, whether I come to your office or not?
Well, when I spoke to him...
Is this cast in stone?
I spoke to him, basically, he said, it's, it's necessary. That's what he said to me. It's a necessary project, and it needs to be done. That's what he said to me. I said, okay, well, you know. And then I, I was out for a while.
Right, I understand.
You know, so I couldn't really engage with him. But we can do that if you would like.
Right. I just want to point out, too, I did go to the police department to see, I heard it was for drainage, I heard it was for safety. So I said, okay, for safety, let's go back as far as Parcipony keeps records of accidents on Fox Hill Road. Do you know how many accidents in the last 10 years there were on this safety issue? Hardly any. Do you know how many were serious? None.
Well, it could be both.
Do you know how many DWI's we give out in this complete town versus speeding tickets? Lots. So if there haven't been any serious accidents, none exist, how can it be a safety issue?
Well, it could be. It could be both. My point is that I think you'll get a clearer picture when you're still with them.
Right. But my, my point is, I want to know, other than the fact that many people are opposed to widening the road and taking our property away from us, what was the impetus for this big change? What would have possessed the town to have done that without any accidents occurring?
He will explain that. If it's drainage, he'll explain it's drainage, you know, but he will.
If you don't mind my saying something about drainage, over 10 years ago, one of my neighbors banged the drum about drainage. The town spent good money, put in storm sewers, and then didn't require anybody to hook up. I hooked up, it worked great for me. I don't get as much water in my basement anymore, I pump it right into the sewer. The next-door neighbor pumps it right out to the street. I called the town one snowy day and said, there's water on the street because that person didn't hook in. Town did nothing. Up at the top of the hill, I understand there's a storm sewer, but somebody up there pumps the water out to the street. Now, that would be a safety hazard I think the town would be interested in looking at.
Basically, your time is up, if you could...
Okay. But I'm just saying, these are things that are simple.
I don't know if they have to hook up, but I could check that ordinance out.
They said at first we would, and then it didn't happen.
And all this, I'd like to follow, Mayor, if you could, you know, obviously, get with you.
Sure.
To get that squared away.
I am signed.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Anybody else from the public would like to come forward?
Rupash Patel, 12 Leoway, Parcipony. Quite a number of sessions ago, I asked the council to consider revising the town vendor ordinance, and I'm just wondering if there's any progress on that?
Can't hear you.
How's that?
That's good.
Okay. So a couple of sessions ago, I asked the town council to consider revising the vendor ordinance, and I'm wondering what the progress is on that.
Is that the only question?
Yes.
Well, I'll do, council president, I spoke to the gentleman. I'll get you, I'll get a copy of the ordinance for you, if you'd like to go over that with me, and we could discuss why, you know, why the ordinance is the way it is, and if there's a way, and talk with the council as well, as a way that we can either amend it or not.
Yeah, that'd be good, because I had dialogue, and I was, I'm glad that he came here. I even, actually, I directed him to make sure he showed up, was that, we'll get together on that, because I, and Ellen, I know that you were in many towns, you're like the guru of township boards and everything else like that. Because I did a little research on different towns, you know, Hanover, the Park Commission, and there's those safety standards in regards to who you have in our parks.
Yes.
You know, obviously providing a service of food or whatever as a vendor, and I think that's something maybe we need to tighten up to make sure that we have good quality service in the town.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we'll follow up on that.
Okay.
And we have your address, and we have a telephone number?
Yes.
Do you have a business card or anything like that?
You could just place the telephone number.
(laughing).
We're actually doing a fundraiser at Lake Parcipony Elementary this Saturday.
Oh, great, great, and good luck with that. And thank you for showing up, too. Thank you.
Let me take your card. Thank you.
And that person right there, that's the one that you keep calling right there, Ellen.
And she'll call you back. Thank you. That's okay, I'll knock you out. What is it for? Oh, what's your name?
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to give one to the clerk, too?
There's not enough for the clerk.
No, not the left?
Got a few questions I'd like answered again tonight, please. Lou?
Yes.
The attorney for the council, has that been decided yet?
Okay.
Mayor Barbario is supposed to appoint an attorney for the council. Has that been done, and who has been picked?
I can't hear you, Pat.
Just talk a little bit closer to the mic.
Yeah, for some reason.
Sorry.
Don't take my minutes, then.
Well, I'll put that five seconds.
The attorney for the council that Mayor Barbario was supposed to recommend, have you gotten a new attorney yet? He originally recommended lavery for you guys. You rejected lavery. You're supposed to come back with another lawyer?
Oh, those other, you know, the labor attorney, the conflict attorney?
No.
No, no.
No.
Oh, no, no, that hasn't happened yet, no.
It's been a long time. Credit reimbursement, the status, the rapid ordinance, I'm questioning only because we keep making up ordinances, and we never really follow them through, so I'd like to know whether or not we're really going to do that.
What was that?
That was the rapid ordinance, responsible...
Prosecutor's office.
Oh, okay.
Responsible better resolution. Okay, one of the most important things I want to talk to you about tonight, those questions I can wait until later for, is the SROs. Okay, I was there when the school board was talking about SROs. This has been ages. What I think here is what Mr. Valori had said, was that, let's be a role model here. No, let's not, okay, because we're setting a precedent. First of all, it's not a win-win. We are paying more out than the Board of Ed is, number one. Number two, this article gives you... gives you the enlightenment that specifically, they don't want to put cops there getting the pensions, taking them off our streets, and not covering the necessary. Now, every year we're here, we need more cops, and we give you more cops, and then you pull stuff like this where you're taking them back out from helping out the public. You are now putting them inside a building, okay? We can hire retired cops, we're doing it. To do this, to jump ahead of what they are trying to do, is a disgrace in my eyes. You're being bullied tonight to do something that is not a right move, in my opinion, and in a lot of other people's opinions.
Two minutes, Pat.
All the questions that I had tonight, one of the things was, "How long is this agreement for?" Because last week, Mayor Barbario did say in answer to my question, "Can this be changed and put retired cops on if this law comes through?" He said, "No." Go back and listen to the tape. He said, "No, it cannot be changed." Now, I see no reason why we just don't go with what we have now, let the school board hire the retired cops. You are wasting the taxpayers' money. Yes, you are. It is a waste of money. Something that a lot of people ran on was to get us the cops we needed to be within the police department to protect the citizens, okay? That's what you all ran on. Now we got the numbers up, and now you're pulling them off again, all right? This is a job being created, and it's-
One minute, Pat.
A chain reaction down the line. This is not our municipal government's responsibility. You can't say anything to the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed can't say anything to you. You can share services, yes. This is not a shared service. This is not a shared service, because they are not sharing it. We are paying the majority of it on the municipal end. We are getting all the bad stuff out of it. Our cops need to be where the residents can get them. Retired cops have shown that they can do this job, and they should be allowed to continue to do the job.
Ten seconds, Pat.
I'm asking you not to vote on this once again. I'm asking you to go out and think about it. There's a lot more involved. For anybody to just widely go and do something without looking is wrong.
Do you want me to do a follow-up, Pat?
I've heard your things on everything else, on this, so-
Well, no, I just, I want to emphasize, and I admire you for obviously doing research on this, but I just, I want you to stress one thing and understand. The table of organization in our police department is 113, and I will give myself credit and my colleagues, we worked hard to get it to 101, okay? But we don't have a juvenile bureau. We've been down a juvenile bureau, okay? But what I'm trying to say to you is that, the day-to-day operation of the police department, this council has no say on. That's how-
This council has had no say on anything, Lou.
Let me finish what I'm gonna say, Pat. Let me finish what I'm gonna say.
I said, you said this all before, I've heard you.
Respect what I'm saying to you, is that if the chief of police wanted to put 10 officers in there right now and not do a shared service, he could do that. That's how this form of-
I don't think he can.
He can do it.
I don't think he can. School board.
Listen to what I'm saying to you. The chief of police, you can look this up, so whoever you're getting your information from-
Okay.
Okay, civil service, okay, the chief has his own bylaws, his own protections, okay? So there's not type of political irregularities, irregularities. But my point is, if the chief wants to allocate wherever he wants to put the manpower, that is up to him. In this form of government, the only way that we could overthrow that per se is by a supermajority. So he has dialogue with our mayor every day. So for 14 years, we, the taxpayers, have been paying for two officers in the building, and there was one point in time, you probably know this, we had an officer in the PAL that we were paying his full salary for.
Okay, can I, wait a minute, wait a minute, one thing, because you just said that.
No, I'm not done yet.
You just said that, I gotta throw in something.
I'm not done yet.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
I listened to you for five minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, at the end of the day, if the council was not aware of this, we're gonna try to hire more cops, right? And we usually have dialogue with the chief. We want these officers on the road, you know, we want them out on patrol, we want to put them in special units, but if he thinks that his priority is the safety of the schools, because he was contacted by the superintendent, he could put officers there, and we have no say on that. So we don't know what intelligence that our detective bureau could be getting from the prosecutor's office, right, from the Department of Homeland Security. So they might say, "Hey, listen, you have some targets that could be soft targets in your school district. Then we have an obligation." I know you're smiling and laughing, but what I'm trying to tell you is the form of government, the chief of police could decide to put whoever he wants, where he wants, when he wants.
I noticed the chief of police is not here backing this.
Okay, so, we have our deputy chief here.
Doesn't matter.
So my point is, our school superintendent is coming here, they're gonna pay for half their salaries, I think this is the right thing to do.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. However, let me ask you one more question.
Thirty seconds, I'm trying to be fair to everybody.
One question. Did you apply for the SRO job at the Board of Ed?
Absolutely, I did.
Okay, I consider that a conflict at this time.
And, Pat-
I consider that a conflict.
Pat, before you leave-
It's not a conflict.
Hey, Pat, before you leave, there was other retired officers had applied for a security position in the school. Remember, Pat, this position that they're filling, it has nothing to do with what I applied for. Nothing to do with what I applied for. Whoever told you or put you up for this obviously had the circumstances totally wrong who provided you this information.
Lou, you know-
Excuse me if I may, counsel-
This is becoming so silly over this.
It is. It's not even a conflict. That was, that was an application to the school board, not an application-
This has nothing to do with this, Pat.
With attachment whatsoever.
I am not gaining anything from this. What am I gaining from this? Okay, does anybody else like to come forward?
I'll sign in, Roy. Messing with 10 Drummond Drive, everybody can hear me? I was gonna do the 1099s tonight, but I'll wait till next month. Just let me cover a few things here, because very few people know what I know. But I want to ask a couple of questions first, Mr. Valori. Are these uniformed police officers, when they go into the grammar schools, the 10 schools, or are they, are they gonna be in, well-
Well, that's what he does.
And are police cars gonna be used? Or are they, you know, are they like detectives? They're not in uniforms.
The deputy chief tonight. They will have-
Because it makes a difference.
I think they will have regular police cars.
Okay, I only get five minutes, there's so much to cover here. I'm sure a lot of you, I'm sure you worked with him. You remember Lieutenant Bradley? He retired about 12, 14 years ago?
He passed away.
Okay, oh, he passed away?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to hear that. But I know his son. You know how I got to know his son? I have such a memory. Hanover was playing Parsippany Hills, and I'm coming out of the backdoor gym, and I said to all the kids hanging out there, "Hey, remember, this was when the basketball teams were good in this town. Now they're horrible, but let's not give them go there." So anyway, only football team. So anyway, so I said, "Hey, guys, remember the game because of the snow date, it's next Thursday night," or something like that. I'm running home through the woods, and there's this nice Audi coming down. And at that time of the year, and this was not, Lieutenant Bradley's kid wasn't doing this, kids were riding on the school property on the grass after a little snow ruining the fields. They did it this past winter, too. But anyway, so I stop them. I know, it's ridiculous, I gotta talk about this. He gets, he had a big shiner in his eye. So I said, "What happened to you?" Says, "You know, you're the guy who said that, and I got clocked from one of the other kids, because I went to the high." So, you know why this happened? Because the cops showed up when the game started. I changed this, and if anybody wants to challenge me on it, it was me. The cops came late, and they left early. I broke up fights between black kids, white kids, football players, all this, all over about five or six years, me. Then it gets better. Our Board of Ed cares about the health and welfare of the kids? You take, I told Glenn Fracell to do this for many years, there's about a dozen kids smoking cigarettes right in front of Mayor Letts's house every morning. So they care about the health and welfare of the kids? I can go on. So the taxpayers should know, since 2001 or 2002, we have two security guards at both high schools, we're paying for them, and then when you had Joe, what was his last name, Siletto or something, or any cop that was there, they only worked Monday through Thursday. So things didn't happen at the high school on Friday, there was no crime, there were no drug deals, there were no nothing. Before, they used to kick me off with my dog, the kids used to think I was the cop with the drug dog. Two minutes, or two seconds? Two minutes?
Two minutes.
Oh, great, I got a lot of time, okay, I'm talking fast, like always. I'll give you another example, how poor this is. Tyler Sims was the quarterback for the Hills. It was a Jewish holiday, so the football game was on a Thursday afternoon. You know what happened that day? The boys' locker room was broken into. I have a pretty good idea who, it was an, I don't know who it was, but nobody's ever gone public with it. The boys' gym was, a boys' locker room was, kids' iPhones, all this stuff was stolen. Now, we have two security guards, and not only just a regular police officer there, other police officers, because it's a football game. So all this, and how many police officers over the last year have had been shot outside of their police department? Just one the other day, down in Maryland. So no matter how many cops you put in, how much security, things are gonna happen. This is, this is a waste of money. I don't know what, it's a waste of money, Lou, and I don't know what your game plan is on this, like Pat said. Maybe you don't have a game, but maybe you think it's gotta be done. To me, it's a waste of money. And I'm gonna leave you with this. Remember two weeks ago, I got up here and I was a little sarcastic, I said, "They're gonna start, we're gonna put a cop at every bus stop." You know what happened down Tom's River? The next morning, a guy held up two kids at a bus stop in Tom's River. Can't make this crap up, all right? Next week with you, your 10, next month we do your 1099s. I'd like to know where all that money's coming. Do I have more time?
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds.
All right, what else should I cover? Anyway, so maybe they can get up here and answer my questions.
Okay, let me, let me-
It's a complete waste of money.
I just, okay, so you can stand there, and you know me a long time, Roy, and I admire you coming up here. You can stand there. Just, just want you to understand the public. Whoever put any of you up to coming here and saying, obviously, something that was so blown out of proportion in regards to, somebody put me up to doing this tonight, or me being a conflict, trust me, I spoke to the school superintendent, I spoke to board members. This has been floating around for a year and a half. I have nothing to gain. You know what I have to gain? Is seeing the kids safe in the school district. My daughter was at Virginia Tech when that shooting occurred, and you remember, when I ran for the Board of Ed, my platform was security in the school systems. And what occurred during that timeframe, when I worked with those Board of Ed members, we have cameras in four of the schools, the two high schools, and the two middle schools. As a matter of fact, we have a very intricate system, very detailed system that interacts with the mobile data terminals when police officers respond to the scene. Did the other 10 schools harden their security systems in place? Yes. So from the very get-go, running on the Board of Ed, I was an advocate for this. So for any of you to come up here and say that I have a hidden agenda, or I have a conflict, really should be ashamed of themselves, because you know me better, that I fought with the best of them up here about accountability, about differences of opinion, but at the end of the day, you have a class-three bill that's gonna be passed, and sooner or later, you're right, it's gonna be under the authority of the police department. And you want, basically, a chain of command when you're dealing with issues with the schools. Because right now, you have officers in those schools that are retired that are not armed. We're not allowed to share information with them, that's confidential, because they're not police officers, they're retired. So you have the school superintendent that is requesting the service. There's, so there's no hidden agenda here. So whatever might have been requested, or whatever details might have been done in back rooms with the old superintendent, this is a new superintendent, and a new board that's requesting this. So whatever was done in the past, I have nothing to do with, or the rest of the council here.
He's not a new superintendent, he's interim.
He's an interim, he is the superintendent. He's running the school of 7,500 students and 2,500 employees, so he's in charge for what he wants there. So he's coming in front of this council, and I really believe that would be negligent and not, obviously, support that. And again, the day-to-day operation, the chief of police could put his manpower wherever he wants, and as a body of government here, we have no say on that. That's a chief's bill of rights.
I didn't bring that up.
No, but I'm just letting you know, so whoever educating you is totally with other members here. The chief of police, okay, but the chief of police could put whatever manpower he wants in this town. That's a chief's bill of rights. So, thank you.
And if I can add one thing, Mr. Medley, you don't know how many kids didn't do something wrong because there was a police officer present. I mean, that's another thing. But if you take that theory, you know, they robbed a bank the other day, we weren't there to handle, did we get rid of our police department? Because we can't, you're not gonna stop every crime, and you're not gonna stop every kid from vandalizing, but I gotta tell you, if there's a presence in there, they're gonna think twice, you know. But you know what, I do admire, one thing I admire about you-
The boys' locker room was broken into, there was-
Yeah, but, yeah, but what I do-
They were all up there watching the football game.
What I do admire about you, you know, we don't always agree, but you are, you have your heart into the town, and I get what you're saying, but the bottom line is that there's a lot of incidents that do happen that you don't even know about, and I don't even know about.
And I know-
And I know a lot of those individuals know, know a lot more than we know.
I know who the kids are pushing the drugs. Tell these, ask these officers or I report to them, which kids to go to, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Anybody else in the public that'd like to come up? Thanks. Thank you, Roy.
We'll do this next week, John.
Kevin Baracato, 14 Subiqua.
And Roy, get rid of that shirt.
You're right, Boston. I think a bigger point is being missed on the, on the SROs or the police department establishing a better juvenile division than we now have. The SROs, you're getting hung up on school and the SROs. Those guys are working 12 months a year. I believe that the class threes, when they are approved, will not be entitled to benefits, which is a big saving for us right there. If they do come in and replace a police officer in the school, that police officer's gonna be back on the road. So I think, and I believe I'm correct with the no benefits for a class three. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, the, the other thing is that the, they have police powers, and they will carry a weapon. So whatever you're hearing tonight, I'll tell you, I'm for you. Please pass it.
Thank you. I know you've been waiting back there, so, welcome.
Same thing. I only get five minutes, not enough time. Nick Homiak from Lake Hiawatha. The planning board, they're still not putting their agenda up. The Waterview thing is coming up Monday. You go to the site, there's nothing there. I hear they want to put a 250-foot sign up there on the highway or something. I'm sure that'll go with the, you know, the once beautiful character of that landscape and that neighborhood over there. I just want to go over, I can't help, I have to side with Pat and Roy about the police, because I would think it's, school by nature is a secure environment. Now we're talking about police security. It's almost like fascism, can I say that? It's, it's like, we're gonna have a lot to do, we're gonna be busy. Are these officers, why is the rank so important? For example, why, why does it have to be lieutenant, not, not a sergeant, or just a sergeant? Do they have degrees in psychology, sociology, or is it just, they're gonna go in there swinging like, there's all these problems, we're gonna solve them? Is Parsippany schools really that bad? I find it hard, hard to believe. You know, if you got, mostly the mischief are things that people do, are going to school, coming home from school.
Just back up a little on the way, because it's echoing here.
I do it as my breath.
Now, you're good, you're good. It's echoing, I'm trying to understand what you're saying. Go on.
It's just, I can't help it, it's overdone. It seems like a win-win for the police department. And if this bill is pending in the background, then it's gonna be taken care of any. So like Pat says, don't jump the gun, you know, and I, you just can't live, live in fear. When the officer said they found a diagram of an American school room in Iraq, I really find that hard to believe. That's just pumping up the fear. The criminal element, the terrorism, they're just trying to throw it all in at once. And the Sandy Hook, because it happens in Sandy Hook, it's, you know, it can happen anywhere. It's just, you can't think that way. You just can't think that way. That's how we lose our, we're gonna lose our democracy eventually, if this is the way that we behave. I noticed that the mayor, you went to a meeting on March the 3rd, and it was for the economic development, and the theme was reinventing our communities. And I would ask you not to reinvent so much, but to maintain our character, and there's things in the community that should never change, because if they are reinvented, redeveloped, or whatever term you want to use, then eventually your sense of place and home is gone. The reason why you're, you're living in a place no longer applies. So you, this, the public interest should be your main thing. Now, to me, when you side with economic development, you're not, you're not, you're not representing the public interest. And Waterview is still the great- And Waterview is still the greatest example. So many people came forward to defend that landscape and that neighborhood, Precipiny.
One minute, Nick.
Precipiny. And the council vote, didn't know, you made a promise, and we have a reinvention of our neighborhood. So, that's all I have to say.
Yep, and I gotta respond, I gotta, I'll respond.
First of all, the form had to do based with the fact that how you have areas in all areas of New Jersey, including Precipiny, well, the office market's not gonna move. You have, you have a market that's in decline, has been in decline since the 1990s.
Have the UPS going up.
Yep, well, that's-
And another office among many vacant off-
Let me say this, because I know you say, you say things like, "Well, why did they go over here?" It's their decision to go where they wanna go.
Who to go where?
Whatever company that comes to Precipiny.
Just like that?
If they don't wanna, you say they'll go get old, go to an older building. Is it cost-effective for them to go to an older building? Probably not, but that's beside the point. I'm gonna talk about Waterview for a minute because you do, you do take some shots at me a lot, and I think they're, first of all, yeah, I tried to get that with Open Space Trust fund money, 9.25 acres, but we had, we had objectors that went there, and they were from Precipiny.
I was one of them.
Yeah, you were one of them, so, you can't get mad if we didn't get the money.
Oh, because the promise was 26 acres, Mayor.
No, no.
26 acres, when you made your promise that night.
I said, "We would try to get the 26 acres, but we have to have a willing seller," but we didn't have a willing seller. You went on the committee that I formed, they knew that. I met with the land conservancy, they said, "You're never gonna get the whole 26 acres." We're not gonna get the whole, what do you want me to do, take it over?
You could've condemned it, yeah.
Oh, you don't do that with people's property.
If we would've stayed in the regional management plan, the biggest mistake you made was getting out of, alright, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It was your property, would you want me to condemn it? Would you want me to take your constitutional rights away from me by discondemning your property because you don't think something should be built there?
If that was my property, I would've gave it to Precipiny because that's me.
Well, that's, you could buy it and then give it to us. It's that simple.
If I had the money, I would.
Alright, well, same thing here.
But, it's all irrelevant, it's, we don't need more retail.
Bottom line is, we don't own the property. And you were gonna get something there. Councilman DePiero said on October 1st, 2013, "You're not like, well, you're not going to like what's gonna turn next." And you know what happened on March 15th of 2015? The Supreme Court decided on the council of affordable housing.
Right.
That's an element we gotta deal with. You might not like it, you might not agree with it, but we have to deal with it.
It all, okay.
Excuse me. And when those affordable houses, affordable housing gets built there, and I know it's inherently beneficial use, you don't, you might not agree with the laws, but the laws are the laws, Nick. We don't have control over those laws.
You could've kept that, you could've kept that all of the control, Mayor, by staying in and completing the regional conformance. You're in the planning zone, all they ask, and it's, there's an agreement that probably would've protected Waterview from the public housing and would've protected that landscape because water protection, water protection. It all could've been done, when you got out of the regional plan, you gave this town to the developers. The other way, everybody benefits, including the developers, and Precipiny maintains its character and integrity.
Between both of yous, two more minutes. Nick, don't go anywhere yet.
Okay.
I don't want you leaving yet. Since the deputy chief is here, what I would recommend for you and the others in the audience, and Roy's back there too, right? Because I'm very disappointed in all three of yous because the reason being is, I'm the guy that gets the phone calls all the time and the emails. So, when I see questions being put, when I know for a fact that didn't come from yous, right? I know it didn't come from yous. Somebody gave the information to you, but that's fine, I'm a big boy. But what I would think is that, moving forward, is the deputy chief or the chief, I would recommend that you sit with him, sit down, he could explain his distribution of manpower, and let the public realize, since 2002, because I don't see nobody fighting about that now, we have two resource officers that have been in the school district since 2012, we've been paying, no, 2002, right, 14 years, right? I didn't see you coming up here complaining, or Pat Patacha, or Roy, right? So, for 14 years, we've been paying those salaries, okay? Not only on top of that, for probably 20 years, we're paying for an officer to be at the PAL building. Nobody was complaining about that. So, needless to say, poor Dr. Seitz walks in here, basically pleading with us that he wants to have officers in the school. Now, all of a sudden, the sky is falling, and they're giving us $170,000 back, and when this Class III legislation gets passed, we could curtail that money for putting the rest of the officers in the rest of the school district, if that's, if that's what the superintendent wants. So, what I find very suspicious and a little disheartening from the folks that come up here, that ask me questions about everything that goes on, and the mayor knows I have aggravated him probably more than any of their councilmen.
No, never.
Alright? Anything that there's a question on, you had, Pat, Roy, anybody, I've always come forward. So, I find it disheartening that I'm being accused, that I'm in conflict, that there's a conspiracy going on. And my heart is in the right direction. However, you all have the opportunity to call Chief Phillips. That gentleman likes running around the town and talking to everybody, and he'll go to show you, our table of organization, we do not have a juvenile bureau. So, this is going to be a better fit. And then, nobody's talking about when they're, obviously, school's out, they're back at the Police Department dealing with juvenile matters. They're always dealing with that. So, needless to say, I really think that if you're gonna come forward, something like this, because my heart's into it, call me, I'm an adult, I've got yelled at by the best of them, and I'll duke it out with the mayor, you know, we've done that all the time. But what I'm trying to say to you, there's no scandal going on here. So, when I see this, I give the person credit, but when I see questions being answered, I'm very suspicious because I've been a cop for 25 years, I was 28 years in the military as military police. So, when I see someone who's a layperson coming up here, asking questions, it's like me trying to challenge you on environmental issues, you're gonna walk circles around me. You're not gonna walk circles around me as a police officer, and I'm telling this man to man. So, please, questions, concerns, please come to me, and I will get the answers back to you. That's all.
I don't think there's a conspiracy, there's an overzealousness to promote the police presence in the schools and it-
But, but, but my point of the matter is, 12 years, 14 years, we've been playing, paying for two officers in there. But, guys, I want you to understand, the chief of police determines he could put his officers wherever we want. Now, we're getting part of that money back. So, if he wanted to put those officers in there, and this doesn't pass through, he could still do it. We're just not gonna get reimbursed. He could still do it, am I right, Mayor?
Well, you're gonna get reimbursed now.
Yeah, we're gonna get reimbursed. That's my point.
Yeah, but you're still paying for the police officer, so, like you said, he could station him wherever he wants.
So, my point is, if he wants to put 20 officers on traffic, you might not like that because it's gonna shut down the whole town, he could do that. That's a chief's bill of rights, he has that authority. We cannot interfere with that in this body of government. That's my point.
You think you can get the police to have the kids clean up the school property because some of these schools in Precipiny are-
Maybe, maybe we could work on that.
Yeah, because we're not showing them how to be citizens, we're protecting them.
That's a valid point. Right now, we're worrying about security. So, anyway, in the near future, thank you.
Alright.
And I admire you, thank you. Anybody else wanna come forward? This is a good night here. Okay, no one else?
I'll come back though. Me too.
Now, that's, we'll, we could talk later on. Alright, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second.
Alright, we got a motion made by Mr. Karifi, second by Mrs. Grignani. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Okay, we're gonna go into ordinances, the second reading and public hearing. We'll start off with ordinance number 2016:02. Mr. DePiero?
Ordinance 2016:02. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition by purchase of properties located in the township through the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and Morris County Flood Mitigation Program. Notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills on February 22nd, 2016. This ordinance was carried from the February 16th, 2016 regular meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2016:02, to be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, second by Councilman Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Public hearing portion of this ordinance, I'd like to make a motion to open this up to the public.
Second, Grignani.
Motion made by myself, second by Mrs. Grignani. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Anybody from the public like to come forward to discuss anything on this ordinance? Okay, I see no one to come forward. Mr. DePiero, you wanna lead the rest of that?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Great. Motion made by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Mr. Paluso.
Okay, ordinance 2016:03. An ordinance amending ordinance 2015:24 entitled an ordinance establishing white-collar salary ranges for the Township of Precipity Troy Hills. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills on February 22nd, 2016. This ordinance was carried from February 16th, 2016, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2016:03, to be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Public hearing 2016:03. Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2016:03.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Anybody from the public like to come forward to discuss this ordinance? I see no one come forward.
Make a motion to close it.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that the said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of the final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Ordinance 2016:04. Ordinance authorizing the business administrator of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills to execute and renew as necessary a lease with the building maintenance superintendent of Craftsman Farms. The notice for this ordinance is above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills on February 22nd, 2016. This ordinance was carried from the February 16th, 2016, regular meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2016:04, to be heard in its second and final reading by title only by, motion made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Anybody from the public like to come forward to discuss this ordinance? Everybody awake back there?
Make a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Loretta.
Ordinance 2016:05, an ordinance of the township council of the township of Precipiny Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending the code of township of Precipiny Troy Hills, including chapter 430, article 4, general district regulation section 430-26, pipelines and chapter 430, article 43, wet head, wellhead protection, section 430, 3-322, potential pollutant sources. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Precipiny Troy Hills on February 22nd, 2016. This ordinance was carried from the February 16th, 2016, regular meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2016:05, be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Grignani, second by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Ms. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Anybody from the public like to come forward to discuss this ordinance? I see no one come forward.
Make a motion to close it.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Grignani, second by Mr. Krefi. Roll call.
Ms. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes. Anybody from the public like to come in and discuss this? Okay, all right. We got some movement in here.
So, first of all, I want to thank you, Ken Dolski, 21 Winfield Drive.
That's three minutes.
Okay. First, I just wanted to thank you very much for, excuse me, for working on this ordinance. And as I had mentioned previously, it was a pleasure working with Mr. Marqueta. And despite the fact, or I should say, I did some research, but Justin did a lot of work on this as well and, and did his fair share, fair share of the research. Second, I just want to point out, maybe more for the public's point of information rather than the town council who already knows this, that this is a unique ordinance as of now. We've asked other towns to look at this and maybe consider something similar to this and, and use the zoning ordinance approach to regulating pipelines rather than the blanket prohibition process. But because the towns in general that are on this pipeline, proposed route, have banded together, even if the other ordinance were to be found that, or to fail, let's say, in a court of law, and this ordinance, being stronger, were to be the only one that perhaps was standing in the way of this pipeline being built through New Jersey, A, it would still be very effective because they don't have an alternate route through this area other than going along the right of way through this town. And second, the township has the advantage of having a coalition of 15 to 20 other towns who are all agreeing to share in the legal expenses associated with defending this ordinance. And so, ultimately, should Precipiny be faced with the fact that it's the only ordinance that's standing in the way of the pipeline, it could also feel, feel very comfortable knowing that the cost to defend this ordinance would be maybe 1/15th or 1/20th of the total cost that it might bear if it were the only town involved in this. So, I think we have a win-win situation all the way around and we're trying to get three or four other towns maybe to have an ordinance like this so that we have a good mix and that we have even more protection for the towns as a whole to have a mix of ordinances. So, thank you once again.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? You have three minutes, just state your name and where you live.
Good evening, Daniel Ortega, 65, Springfield Avenue, Springfield, New Jersey. My name is Daniel Ortega and I work for the Engineer Labor Emporio Cooperative, E.825, with a labor management fund for the operating engineers, local E.825.